Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 28th, 2022 meeting of the Select Board. Tonight it is a joint meeting with our Finance Committee colleagues to begin the budget process. But as usual, before we get started, I do want to read the public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield should be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. John, are we all set?
I hope you are.
So is anyone here for public forum or is anyone joining us online who is here for public Doesn't look like it. Well, certainly no one's here. And then just quickly for announcements, I just wanted to recognize the passing of Bob Pielis last week, who was a longtime resident of Hatfield, a longtime basketball coach, who really had an impact on dozens and dozens of players, including my brother. He was a legend. He brought the team to two state championships and, you know, was really an important part of town, you know, for a very long time before he retired down to Florida. And I was just really sad to hear that. And I thought it really warranted acknowledging, because he did give a lot of his time to the young athletes of this town. So just wanted to acknowledge that and send our condolences to his family. Does anyone else have any announcements?
Nope.
Thank you.
That's it. So we can get right into our posted business, which, as I mentioned, is this is we've assembled our financial team, which is our Finance Committee, our treasurer, our accountant, who is not able to be here.
Can we pick up that MassDOT sign?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. We're gonna, I'm sorry. We have a very quick matter to take up before we get into that.
Before the budget.
We have, we have an offer to get a sign board from MassDOT.
Correct.
Mike, our Chief de Koshak is here. Mike, did you want to speak to this or?
No. Do you have any questions available?
Well, I mean, it might be good to explain to townspeople exactly what this is, Mike, just so people understand.
Sure. So there is an opportunity to get a new speed sign. So around town, you've noticed we have these speed signs hanging on telephone poles throughout town. And periodically, when the weather's good, you notice our small red tow behind speed sign that we bring to various parts of town. This grant offered by MassDOT would replace, wouldn't actually replace them. We would have both of them, but it would be the same type of sign as the tow behind. I can't speak to exactly what kind yet because those details haven't come out, but it would be another radar sign that we could tow around town and place on different roads that have, you know, issues throughout the year that we could post there. So that's essentially what it is. The state is offering that to us and they're offering it to us at no charge, as many other communities are offering it to. And it's not a given. It's something we have to apply for.
Great. Sounds great. Do we have to make, do we have to vote to accept it and enter into this MOU?
There's a memorandum of understanding that the Select Board should vote to enter into. It's for three years.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to enter into the MOU with MassDOT with regards to the...
I'll second that. And I do want to say thank you to the Police Chief.
Oh, the speeding sign.
The speed sign board is a pilot.
Sorry, go ahead, Ed.
I'll second that and I say thank you to the Police Chief for putting this all together for us.
Yes, thank you, Chief. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this agreement is just for me to sign, so.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, Marlene.
You guys.
And thanks, Marlene, for being the conduit.
Yes, and.
Yep. Marlene really is the one spearheading this, so thank you very much, Marlene.
You're welcome, Chief. Thank you for your assistance.
Okay. So back to our agenda item of assembling our financial team. To begin discussions of the FY 2023 budget, this seems to come up really fast every year.
Boy, does it.
Feels like we just finished the last one.
Too fast today.
But tonight is not necessarily to start going through budgets, but to set goals and expectations, review our debt schedules, set up meetings with departments, and then begin talks about the details of annual town meetings. So, I mean, the goals and expectations are pretty much the same every year. I mean, we have a little bit of a different, it's a little different this year. We have some ARPA funds. We're gonna, you know, still have some left to talk about and spend. But we do have, we, it looks like most of our departments have submitted their budget requests. There's a few that are still remaining, but I would assume we can impress upon them how important it is to get these things in in a very timely manner. And I guess I would just open the discussions if.
I'd just like to add that I did share with the Finance Committee last week that recreating the budget workbook, which my goal was to have that available tonight, and I still haven't.
Did we get another, didn't we get a new budget program?
Well, we have a, it's on the cloud. If you recall, we subscribed to, we received a grant through the Department of Revenue, actually, to set up a budget platform. And ClearGov is the author of this budget platform. And so it is all set up. Lori and I have, have, you know, been making an effort to use it. All the data has been updated currently. FY 21, actual budget numbers are in there. Anybody can look at this through the town's website if at the bottom there is a link to just go to that site.
Even though it's a working document?
Read-only.
It's a read-only. I was gonna say Lori and I and Cher, and I think we have permissions to go in and.
But it's, even though it's a working document, it's in there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's all current, current data that's in there.
Oh, current, so not, not doing the budget, not 23's budget?
No, not yet.
But the current budget.
Not yet.
Okay, well, that's great that townspeople can see.
Yeah.
So my, my plan, I intend to go in and plug in the, like, the requested and then the recommended for 23.
Am I, am I, I thought we bought a program that would help with all this budget?
We did, we did. We pay an annual fee and.
Are we talking about the same program?
I believe so. So, but they cannot set up the recap sheet, you know, the reports that we use for developing the budget. We're not able to get that. I can export all the department's budgets into an Excel spreadsheet, but the actual document that we're so accustomed to working with is not, is not available in this program. So when we walk through the budgets, I'll be able to pull it up, log in, pull it up, and everybody will be able to view FY 21 or FY 22 and FY 23. But the budget workbook that we work with.
Which is an Excel spreadsheet.
Will be a separate document. Right. That will be a separate document.
Okay. I guess, sorry.
And that's being, that is what's being recreated, so we wouldn't be using the one that I know you were uncomfortable with that and other departments didn't or other board members didn't, like, weren't comfortable with it.
I did, I thought we were getting this, something different, not what you're talking about, this other program. Didn't we approve of?
It doesn't do that function is the thing.
It just doesn't do the function of pulling all the, all the revenues, you know, state, local receipts. I mean, that information is available there, but it doesn't produce the documents that we need.
Put it in a format that we can easily see what's going on.
Correct. Right.
Yeah.
We had hoped it would.
Yes, and that's.
That's where you're, where you're thinking of that.
Oh, okay, because it was, it was a capital, I mean, it was something we bought last year, right? It was, it was something you asked us to approve of expenditure for.
Yes. It was approved, authorized the year before, and then everything was ready to go last year, but it was ready to go just before we were going to town meeting, so we weren't able to use it last year.
Okay.
Okay. So anyway, that budget workbook is, is in, in development. I sent it to Lori. I was just saying to Brian, I don't know if anybody heard me, it's unlikely that Lori will be able to join us tonight. I had forgot her, she had a family member having a medical procedure today. She was gonna try to, but I told her not to worry about it.
She's not logging in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, Lori and I are, you know, Lori and I have been in conversations about the, the budget. And I asked her, you know, for another set of eyes to just look at all, to make sure that all the FY 21 actual data that I have plugged in is, is correct and FY 22. FY 22 budget numbers for the state, I'm using the governor's budget proposal.
Mean 23?
Mean 23.
Right.
And usually that's what we start with and.
That's what we start with. Right. Yeah.
That's a good start. There's no other starting place, other than that really that you could.
So I have configured all the recap information in that budget workbook. What I'm still entering in is all the departments.
Right.
And then the debt schedule page, if you remember, all those different pages.
Right.
And I, and I think the thing we want to make sure when you're entering that information is that we're using, like, 22 actual numbers in the budget.
Right, right.
Versus, sometimes we've gotten caught in the, in putting the, the numbers that we used at town meeting, which should be about the same, but they change a little once the cherry sheet and the recap and all that go forward. So, so then it gives us a truer picture of what we, right?
The numbers that FY 22, the FY 22 numbers really reflect numbers from the recap sheet.
Right.
When we, you know, submitted the recap, set the tax rate.
Which we did this in the fall.
Yes, we did.
Right.
We're much more on track with all of that stuff.
Oh, yes.
Which should make this process.
Yes, absolutely.
A little bit easier than.
Should make, should make it better.
Not as many unknowns going into it, particularly as we get closer to town meeting.
And I think when we're, when we're looking at goals and expectations, we can, you know, first, I thought about it a little today. We can break it down a little. We have the operating budget, which, quite honestly, is probably going to be tight, you know, if you consider two and a half and whatever, whatever else. So that's, we can, we can talk about that. And then you could break off, say, you know, our free cash numbers and our capital, which looks good this year because we have a big free cash number. We were able to use some of the ARPA funds to take care of some capital, capital things, but, and, you know, so. But, you know, going back to the operating budget, you know, I guess I personally would like to talk about goals and expectations there. What are we gonna do about, you know, cost of living? What, you know, what do we think? How much money's gonna be available? I mean, Marlene and I spoke a little bit, you know, if you plug in the numbers, two and a half is gonna offer us about $200,000 worth, worth of funds if we get $60,000 in growth or?
I was gonna ask, well, I was gonna ask about.
New growth, new grow, growth.
New growth and that, and we have not gotten an official number, but it, you know, then, you know, you're looking at an operating budget, essentially maybe 260, 270,000 more for 23 than we have in 22, which judging, I haven't looked at all these budgets, but, you know, we, we need to, you know, think about.
Go fast.
Yeah, some of our goals there and how we're gonna, how we're gonna address some of that.
And any budget increases would be based on contractual obligations. I know that there's an increase in the general insurance, general property and liability insurance. There wasn't an increase for the current fiscal year, but we do know that there will be one for 23 and 24.
Do we know how much that is?
It's about a, I think it's a two and a half percent increase. Let me see.
It's, it's okay, but.
Okay, well, when we get to it.
When we, when we get to it, but.
Glad to review it, but I know that there's an increase there.
And, and do we have any other known increases, you know?
Management contracts. There are some increases there and.
What do you mean, management contracts?
With department heads.
With department heads.
Contractual, those are.
Contracts, employment contracts.
Okay.
That were.
And do we know, and it would be helpful to know what that number is gonna be.
Okay.
Going forward too. I mean.
I put it in the number that I sent out with, for Brian, for the, with the COLAs. It's already built in, the contractual ones. So we ran some preliminary numbers just to see what COLAs would look like.
Right.
Just to have it for discussion purposes.
Right. But I, I think, I don't want to speak for Darryl, I think what he might be looking for is broken down even further between a contract that's already.
Yeah.
Been executed that we, that we have to do and the other, which was a, let's see what it might cost for those other things.
Exactly.
I already have it broken down.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure you do, Sharon.
And then we have two unions that we're in the midst of negotiations with.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
That was my next, I was gonna say a DPW contract, yeah. That would be the other.
Well, by the time we're done with that.
Teachers.
COLAs won't be much.
Oh, and teachers, you're right.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, I mean, that's what, 80% of employees?
Right.
Plus, perhaps.
Right. Between, yeah, between the teachers and, and in our DPW.
Yeah, I mean, that's gotta be.
Right. And do we expect that both those contracts will be done with soon?
That would be the expectation.
Yeah. Okay.
One is just getting, well, they're both sort of kind of getting off the ground. So the teachers' union is, has a contract right now, which is expiring. The DPW negotiation of a new contract has been delayed due to some internal union concerns that were taking place. So that contract actually officially expired last June 30th. So.
So is there?
So their contract would be effective, it would be new for all intents and purposes, but has expired. Teacher's contract has not expired, if that's making any sense.
No.
I don't know that it changes the numbers, but it, that's, that's where we are right now with.
Does it change with the DPW if, if it expired, say, July or June 30 or of lat, of this current fiscal year? There's a possibility that depending on what gets figured out in that contract, that there'll be money that will be owed to those certain employees that we may have to find it.
Depending on how the, the contract gets settled, yes.
Yep. Okay. Just want to make sure I got that kind of straight. Are there any other knowns, you know, you know, there was, there was discussion, you know, I know with, you know, I don't want to talk about all, you know, get into too many details, but are there any other things in the budget that we know are gonna come up? We know with the fire department.
I was just gonna mention.
Is talking about, you know, some possible increases, you know, for employees, you know, so that they can provide the services that they're supposed to provide for the town. And, you know, that would have certainly an impact on the budget. I didn't know if you knew anything on, on, you know, just generally on any other departments, police, DPW. I'm, I'm not aware of any, Darryl.
I'm not aware of any other than that one.
Right.
On, on our side, you know.
Right.
The town side.
On, on the town side.
Other than the, you know, I wouldn't say concerns, but, you know, Police Chief de Koshak has had conversations in the past with changes in, you know, the new legislation regarding police. And there, he definitely would impact his, his operations.
And may impact it in 23.
And I'm sure that would be part of his proposal. I haven't looked at the proposal yet, but.
Yeah. I haven't either.
That would be in there.
I don't know, Sean, anybody else? Any other general questions about the budget that we should be thinking about from kind of the 10,000-foot level, looking down?
Was there, it's my understanding that the Finance Committee met with the School Committee last week?
We had.
Was there anything that came up out of that from a?
We had a plenary meeting with the school that are, of course, gonna meet when, when we all meet jointly and, but, you know, their number, you know, right now is $455,000 of additional taxpayer money that, that would be needed, you know, in the budget that they're working on now. I mean, they, they understand the town's, you know.
That's like a 10% increase, isn't it? Roughly?
Division.
Off the top of my head, I mean, 8%? Yeah.
Yeah. And it's, you know, and we all know the difficulty there and when we, you know, and, but.
So we would already be $200,000 in the hole for trying to balance a budget if the school got.
Yep. Yep. That'll be a challenge and I, we know, we.
That's before any other department gets a single penny.
Absolutely. Yep.
I hope that budget is a starting point.
I would think so. I mean, but, you know, it's, the, the schools, as you know, is, it's, it's tricky because we need to draw in students. We need to draw in our choice students. It's, it's kind of a.
We do have some declining revenue in choice, although not necessarily related to a reduction in choice students.
Right.
But we're related to a reduction, related to how the payout works over time.
Right.
We're, I mean, their numbers actually for students are almost exactly the same as last year. They're not all, they don't, it's not broken down, but there's like, elementary and Smith Academy, there's like 12 more students this year than there was last year or something. It's not, there's really no change. Now, there may be some more native students and fewer school choice students. I have no, I don't think it's significant. I think what's happening is that the payout decreases over years and we're reaching, we must be reaching a point for some people where the payout is decreasing. And so, you know, maybe in a future year, we'll have some more money coming in, but the, the trust fund is significantly less.
Is that a new formula, did they say?
No, I don't think so.
That it, I always thought it was kind of this, this student equals this much money and that there wasn't necessarily.
Yeah, but when you put special education in and.
Well, yes.
Other things, it depends, yeah.
Right.
So it can, it can vary, even if you have the same or students, depending on the makeup of those students.
And then bulk and, you know, there's, there's a lot of variables there.
Right.
But Darryl, you're, I'm sorry.
You know, that's, and the trust, the school choice reserve fund is significantly less than what we, I guess, would be accustomed to.
Seeing the choice fund.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think they were talking somewhere this, their, this budget is, there's what, $200,000 that they're trying to hold back.
It's about one year, it's about one year's worth of.
Right.
If things went really wrong.
Right.
It would buy you one year, based on what they're using in the operating budget.
It makes it a little, little nervous. I mean, Brian, you remember when we, you know, when the budget kept half a million and maybe more, you know, for just in case, so. And I should say that, and of course, the school's gonna be here presenting their budget, but it, it was a level services. They're not talking about additional teaching positions and, you know, additional programs. This is a level services, so. And, you know, it kind of leads into a bigger discussion as things cost more, you know, in every budget, whether we're talking DPW, police, fire, or, or school. You know, I hate to say it, but at some point, our town is gonna need some, if we want to maintain the services that we currently maintain, you know, whatever, you know, on, on all levels, we are going to need some sort of operating override in order to meet the needs. And, and that's really for townspeople are gonna have to voice their opinion on that because.
Yeah. I mean, if you think about just what we talked about with fire the other day, right? I mean, there's.
Right.
You know, to maintain the kind of services that we used to having without volunteers.
Right.
It costs money.
Yep.
I think that the, you know, the confines of two and a half catch up to you over time.
Absolutely.
And we, maybe we are at that point. I, I think in all likelihood we might be. And it is a, a matter of putting information out for townspeople. I mean, the school department, you know, the school system is the pillar, it's the foundation of our, of our town.
Yep.
And so you want to make sure you're making the investments and things like that. The fire department, right? We all want to know that they have the ability to, to respond as, as any of us in this room or people we care about could need it. And so sometimes I think that you can, you know, I, I understand Proposition 2 and 1/2 and why it was put in and, and it's a good and responsible thing, but it does at some point catch up with, with communities and what they, what they can provide.
The nice part is we're not, I mean, we're not anywhere near the cap either.
Right.
Like, we're not, we're restrained by, by our own sort of past action, but we're not anywhere near the cap of two and a half, like some communities might be. You know, there are some communities in states that are near maxing out.
Right.
They couldn't do it if they wanted to. Couldn't do anything if they wanted to.
Right.
So we do at least have options.
And I think.
I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, I was just fooling around a little bit with some numbers. I mean, and Hatfield still, as it has for many years, based on sort of average single-family tax bill, sits pretty much in the middle of comparable communities. I mean, if, and it's, it's hard to make these comparisons really because, you know, not everybody's running a K through 12 district.
Right.
And they're doing other things, but of communities, like, if you want to look at communities running K through 12 districts, there aren't many, but Hadley would certainly be one. I mean, the average tax bill in Hadley is $300 less than in Hatfield a year. But, you know, they have significantly different commercial tax base than we do.
Totally different commercial tax base.
So, you know, I mean, yeah, it's a, it's a really different scenario in terms of that. I mean, that's why it's hard to make these comparisons specifically, but just generally, you know, of towns of comparable size, we sit pretty much in the middle. And if towns of comparable, I guess, comparable size and comparable, comparable EQV or land value, we sit kind of in the middle of that too, although there's, that's a small list of maybe five towns or six towns. But, you know, it's just hard because Lee, Hadley, and Lennox are really the only ones running their own K through 12 districts and obviously Lennox and.
Little different.
Much bigger than, they're both big, much bigger than us, first of all.
What about North Brookfield? North Brookfield runs their own.
Yeah.
Of course, that's central part of the state.
Yeah, I know. I had some little look at that one. I mean, the general ta, Westbrookfield is probably more comparable to Hatfield just in terms of size and everything. The ones around here, they're most comparable with Williamsburg and Northfield. Now, Northfield's tricky because it has a power plant. Or there's, I think it's a power plant. There's something there that is.
Yes, it's called First Light.
Yeah. Tax base to be way different.
Oh, plus they have a school.
They have a school.
Yes.
Very large land.
And Williams, I mean, Williamsburg is, is, you know, of course, the tax rate in Williamsburg, the average single-family tax bill is about $1,000 higher than it is in[1751.33] And Williams, I mean, Williamsburg is, is, you know, of course, the tax rate in Williamsburg, the average single-family tax bill is about $1,000 higher than it is in Hatfield. You know, so.
Wow.
Yeah. You know, and so, I mean, like, we, we pretty much sit right in the middle of most of these lists. So the tax burden here, I mean, the rates, set aside the rates because they don't mean anything just by themselves really. But if you're just looking at what the average single-family home pays, we're right dead in the middle, just about.
We've always been there. It seems like every other year or so, we, we kind of have a look because of whatever is happening in town. But I, I definitely echo Diana's sentiments regarding the two, two and a half, just, you know, as far as increases go. And, and to Daryl's point, I, I certainly understand school of choice has been a great tool. I, I mean, this conversation would have had, would have happened years ago if school of choice hadn't been implemented, quite honestly.
Oh, absolutely.
And, but here we are, you know, and, so here we are. So I, I believe that as we're going through the budgets, all the budgets, we've had some very lean years for, for town departments and employees. And, you know, while we're seeing us come out of one concern internally, financially and all of that, here we are with the reality now of, of, of what's going on with economies and expenses and things like that. So I think as we go through this, we're probably going to say this, as usual, right? This is what we need to have. Here's a bare bones. And then to the, to the townspeople, and, and if you want all of these things, here's what, here's how we're going to get there. And that's going to be up to the town to decide, as, as it should be and as it always is.
Always is.
I mean, just being, like, the capital thing is, you know, we're in really pretty good shape.
Right.
I was just going to mention that, that there's sort of the two parts to this and, you know, people may be thinking, well, wait a minute, the town got all these ARPA funds. Why would this be happening? It's totally different how that works and you can't, you wouldn't use that as operational money. It's one-time money. But it, long-term is going to be so great because of the things it's allowing us to clean up off that capital plan. So it positions us really well on that capital side, but.
But that is the thing, Diana.
The operational side is different.
I was going to say, people need to keep in, I mean, we all need to keep in mind, you know, the residents of Hatfield need to keep in mind that those ARPA funds, you know, it's, it's like a grant, right? It's, or it is a grant. It's, it's kind of a one-shot deal.
Right.
So if you, you can't build it into an operations perspective. And that's why we always tried to, on the school committee's side, not build school choice into any sort of operational side of the house, but necessity, you know.
Can only do that for so long.
Because, right.
You can't educate one-third of the students without any money.
Well, that's, exactly. So, so here we are.
Yeah. Well, and, and again, this is a little from the 10,000-foot level. Like, so you're talking about master plan and thing like that. We had a discussion about this the other day. So Hatfield's a wonderful community. There's a lot of these 55 and older areas. We need students.
Well, I've been talking about this. We need family homes to be built in this, in this town.
And so, you know, and I hope going forward with the master plan, that, that is looked at. Because, you know, we, we, I know there, people get worried about, oh, we're going to have to educate all these kids. Well, we need kids to educate if we want to maintain a school system that we have.
And that's not a unique Hatfield problem. I mean, that's a, there's a lot of places in Western Mass facing that.
Right.
Same issue and have been for years.
Right. I mean, it's the, it's the decrease in overall family sizes and, you know, we're, we're really rich in private schools and charter schools here in, in Western Mass. And, you know, it's really easy from here to send your kid to a number of very prestigious private schools. And, you know, so it's.
The community's significantly getting older, you know.
Yes, our community is getting older.
How many people are over 50, I mean.
Well, and I, I've, I've talked to people about this.
Right.
I think Daryl and I may have had this conversation. People who've been in town a long time, and, and I would urge people who are, who might watch this to do the same thing. As you drive through town and you drive by houses, ask yourself if there's kids in those homes. And there are, as you drive down the street, the, the homes, I know there are not many kids in these homes anymore. People are staying here a really long time. There was the statistic about Hatfield that came out a number of years ago that people who live here in Hatfield have lived here longer than any other town in the Commonwealth, which is a great bragging point about how great this town is, but it means that homes don't turn over and families don't come in. It's really hard for young people to buy a home here. They're expensive and not many come on the market. So we, you're right, Daryl, we're running out of that. And I think we also have to continue to be as friendly to business as we possibly can.
Absolutely.
And, and, you know, encourage business to come here. We've been really lucky with the businesses we have attracted. We have absolutely terrific businesses here, but having more would be a great thing.
And that's what makes the sewer project that, that's being done, that you guys, that are doing out on Route 5 is, you know, that could be integral to really helping us out going forward.
Yeah.
But.
And, and Daryl, you bring up a good point. So you, you invest in something like that. You invest in more sewer.
Yep.
And then you hopefully attract businesses. And you invest in your schools and you hopefully attract additional school choice.
Yep.
You know, and so I think that's.
Yeah.
We have to make those investments.
Right. And, and, you know.
And it better serves your own, sorry, Daryl.
No, no, that's fine. And I, I would say that last year, you know, in the budget or the current budget, we, we did pretty well in starting to up some of the salaries and, you know, trying to pay people a little bit better. And, you know, certainly we want to make a commitment to the, to the people that are invested to working for this town, so.
For sure.
We, we historically underpay.
Absolutely.
Across the board.
Yeah. No, no, and we, we may not be able to get away with, you know, that's, that's something in this day and age that it's hard to get away with.
Well, what we can't get away with apparently is just depending on volunteers to do.
Right.
Things that are jobs essentially, you know, or, I mean, volunteers or, or people who are on call essentially not really getting a salary.
Right.
To fill all these positions. It's just a very different demographic environment.
Particularly some that require a, a good amount of training and.
Well, there's just not bodies in town during the day like there used to be. You know, people aren't working here. You know, people live here, but they work elsewhere mostly. You know, you don't have the numbers of people available.
Right.
To do some of this stuff.
Well, and, and, you know, we've talked about this before, but we've been able to rely for many years on a lot of different positions and, and relying on that towny discount. You know, people from town who want to work in these positions and it's really great, but they're significantly underpaid compared to their counterparts in neighboring towns. And so.
Absolutely.
It's something, I think we've been making some progress on those things. It has to happen slowly and incrementally. It can't just be, but. It is a, it's a reality that we face.
Right. Probably it would be good if, if it's okay with you, Diana, to review the debt schedule and, and go through that. I know Mike, looks like Mike Cahill's online, so he'll be interested to hear, hear all this.
He is online, but he says he can't actually hear anything we're saying.
Oh, what?
So he texted and said that he's having a really hard time hearing you guys.
No, it's on the watch on YouTube.
I did actually say that. I said, well, it's recorded so you can watch it again later because I didn't know how to fix it mid-meeting. But something to look at. So I had, I met with the Finance Committee the other day, but in your guys' packet, there's a sheet that kind of looks like this. So, um, this is kind of our preliminary list going forward. The good news, this is, if Mike Cahill could hear me, is that we are in the process of doing a bond, which is what we've talked about for multiple years. We finally have enough good audits and good reports to be able to move forward with that. So I'm working through the different stages of that, that we have to get our financial policies in order and a couple other things. So when you look on the left-hand side, there's one, two, three, four, I think there's six items that we're going to put into a bond. A couple of those you will see are running, will be expiring in March. So I will be doing a short-term borrowing from March to July to get us through because everything else will come due in July. So I have asked them to run the numbers so we can get a better estimate of what that will look like. The good and bad of bonding is it consolidates all your debt and it gives you a, a set number every single year. You're not going to get the best interest rate as you get right this moment because it's a hit or miss. But you're one and done in that we're going to know for the next 15 years exactly how much money we're going to be spending in the principal and the interest so that these items will move forward. A couple of projects are coming off. There's a couple that say done. This will be the last year that we're paying on them. And then there's a few that are coming off in one or two years. So that will nicely clean up a lot of this page. So it'll look a little different the next time you see it when we get the bonds all together. I think I'm actually just going to add another section so the bond stuff will be in its own category down like at the bottom of the page. The other thing we have on the table in this is that I haven't borrowed the 1.6 million for Route 5 because we haven't needed to use it because we're using the grant money first. But I will be borrowing that in this next little group of March stuff because when the weather gets good, that project's really going to start rolling and we're going to hopefully, you know, finish it up eventually. So we'll need that money. The other thing on here is the fire ambulance police loan. You guys, as a town, we authorized $255,000 for a borrowing for equipment, for radios and other apparatus. Luckily, the fire chief was able to get a grant. So that match is a much less and he was able to get a lower price. So Lori's actually going to be in-house tomorrow. So we're going to have a better idea of what that number looks like. I'm guessing 30,000 versus the 255. So I would propose that maybe we don't want to borrow it and we want to use some of the free cash we have so that we don't even, we can just take it right off the list and be done with it. There was, the question was asked, could we use ARPA? But I'm not sure. I haven't gotten a good grasp. I have it as a question for Lori for tomorrow. Because it was a previously approved borrowing, whether that's okay or not, I'm just not sure. But if it's only 30,000, we do have considerable free cash, so we could just take that off the table. So that may be an option for that. And then I haven't seen capital, what it looks like for this coming year. So if there's anything else we're going to think about borrowing from this, I don't know. But the list is much less than it has been. So I think that's really good progress, you know, moving forward. So you will see, the next time we meet, I will have had the interest. So I'll have a little bit more solid numbers. I, why I haven't turned in my own budget is because I wanted to get this all plugged in for you guys. So we had solid numbers because obviously it's going to, the interest will change from year to year. So we're moving in really good directions on all fronts. So I think, you know, we'll be happy to get the bond taken care of. We'll be happy to get these loans in place. And then whatever we decide we want to do, kind of moving forward from there. Does anybody have any questions about this sheet?
Thank you for putting it together.
Of course, of course.
Looking at the capital plan, we didn't have a ton of borrowing for this year thought about. Except maybe, maybe fire might have some items with a look at that. And. We got a, there's a couple items and they, they may or may not be, there doesn't seem to be a ton of it to me.
Nothing, nothing really large.
No, just depending on how, what we decide about the fire truck and how we decide to do it or whatever. That would be one large item and then the trash compactor at the.
Right.
That's an ongoing one.
And we're pretty close to have, we're probably one meeting from finalizing.
Yeah, we'll have a priority list and I think an idea about where we're going to.
And maybe next week.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we have one meeting. When's it?
We have another meeting. Do we have a meeting next week?
No, we have a meeting.
Oh, we don't?
No.
We do.
On the 28th, didn't you say on, yeah.
Yeah, after school vacation.
Last night you said February 28th. It's a Monday.
That's right, February 28th. Yeah, that, that, we should wrap it up. Pretty much wrap it up.
So, and the only other thing I would mention, because I just looked at my notes, was if we don't end up needing to borrow the 255 and we use free cash, however we choose to do that, we will need an article on town meeting to rescind the borrowing if we don't need to, just so everybody hears it. We don't forget, because that's happened before, that that would be on our list. I know Lori's also working on, there's a couple of projects out there that do have some remaining money. So as the, this progress moves forward, she'll be able to say, hey, there is something you can repurpose. I know there's a little bit of money left from the project downstairs, for example. I don't know what that number is, but there is some money. So when we get into the conversations about the other things that need to happen in this building, that may be an option for some of the funding too. So that's what I got for loans for you.
So.
Thanks, Sharon.
I'm going to take a stab at what Mike Cahill has been asking for, for years. And, and, and I'm going to look for help all around the table.
Yeah.
But, and, and Mike, I apologize in advance if I get this wrong, but I, I, I believe what Mike was hoping was that if we could consolidate some of our loans, that.
Restruct, re, refinance.
Refinance, it would free up some additional space for us for borrowing money, for borrowings. Am I right so far?
Yes.
Personally don't see that happening, but that's.
It'll be a little bit, but not, not to the savings. And him and I have had this conversation. So it's, it's not this big all-in-all that he believes that it is. So, and I questioned myself because I went right to the financial people and said, okay, this is what is being asked of me. Help me understand. And that's not the, it's not like refinancing your home and then having all this extra money. The debt is, the debt is. And so they kind of tell us what we can pay per year. We don't dictate to them that, you know, this is how much we can afford to pay. I want my monthly payment to be this. So when I get the numbers, I think we'll have a little bit more answer to him to see what it really looks like on paper. But I don't think it's going to be the, the solving grace that he thinks. But I've said that for every year that he's asked me, I say the same thing, that I don't think.
Well, the other thing is the, the short-term notes that you're on right now.
Yep.
For all the, and what's that, the last two or three years' worth of stuff, four years' worth of stuff? Since we haven't really had a bond rating and that the last interest rate you got was 0.9%.
Yeah.
So you're not going to get a 15-year loan.
Not going to get a bond for that, right.
You're not going to get a year, next year's, you're not going to get from March to July at 0.9%.
And, and I think Mike just wanted us to look into that sort of thing. And so, as, as.
Do our due diligence. And we're certainly doing that. So I can feel comfortable.
Well, and I'm glad you've communicated that with him.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we, we should continue to look at it.
It should always be looked at.
I mean, we certainly have infrastructure that needs to be addressed. I mean, we, you know, with, whether it's extension of sewer and other parts of town, you know, or water, you know, water, water projects. There's, there's.
Major sewer plant project on the ground.
Major sewer plant, yes. We have, we have a whole list of things coming up. So, anyway. So hopefully I, thank you, Sharon.
Of course.
For that. So, do we want to, do we want to spend a few minutes and chat about capital or do you want to wait?
I think we should wait, Sean.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we're, we're, well, we're going to come up with a priority list, right?
And then we'll present that. I, I think we should wait. There's nothing too earth-shattering on there. It's just.
Right, right. And then, and then, you know, as a group, we'll decide, you know, what, what we can actually afford out of all this.
I mean, yeah. I mean, the only thing, the only things that are, I guess, major sort of changes from what we've had in the past is just this elementary school roof has been pushed.
Right.
Off a year. So it can get onto a 10-year timeframe to be eligible for school building assistance funds.
Right.
I mean, that's a.
It's a wise decision.
Yeah, well, yes, because it could pay 50, 60% of it potentially, which would save us, you know, somewhere in a half-million-dollar neighborhood potentially. So we want, you know, obviously that's a wide choice if we can fix it now. And our last conversation about the fixing was it's really not that significant. It's not a capital item to fix it for short-term.
Right.
But the.
The actual doing it is a different story, yeah.
Yeah, that's a whole different.
And then the other, the other thing that has come up that has not been on the capital plan, sort of in the pipeline, is the, some work at, in the office up there that.
Oh, right, yeah.
You know, we would talk about that. I, I think makes sense on a lot of levels.
Yeah, that would probably not be till 2024 for an actual.
Yeah.
There, there might be some, there, well, there, there will have to be some design work.
They have to do some engineering design.
Yep, some.
Exactly.
But.
And the school parking lots are pushed off as well.
Right.
Right.
I know those, we keep pushing those off.
Keep pushing them off.
Eventually, they're going to go away.
One way or another, it's going to go away.
It's going to be the end of that.
Big holes, it's going to swallow it all up or something.
The way that prices are going crazy with those kinds of products, it might not be the most prudent time to.
Yeah, one can only hope that that's going to settle, settle down.
I would hope. I would hope.
Do we want to go on to talking about meetings with departments and, and how we're going to schedule? I certainly.
We are scheduling them, some departments for next Tuesday.
Right.
Can we, can we try to start with the school? I mean, I think it makes sense to start with the biggest, if they're available. I don't know.
Well, my only question would be, do you want to give them more time to get beyond where they are now in terms of their process?
I don't know where. I don't know where they are in their process.
We don't have an actual budget, it's just, it's their draft.
Yeah.
It hasn't been, you know, voted on or anything, nothing's really, it's, I think it's kind of their initial, my understanding is it's kind of their initial draft.
Their initial draft.
It went to full, the full committee though, school committee, right, they had said that last week.
Okay.
They haven't adopted it, but it went to the full committee for review, and, and Michael was very clear about it being a preliminary budget.
Yeah.
It probably would help to have them come in, I mean, because we could, certainly, you know, we will have to, you know, we don't, we don't have our final numbers of what we can afford, but it's good to have them as part of the process, because if we determine, you know, the sooner we determine whether we can or cannot afford what their request is, the sooner that they can act on trying to figure out
That's why I was thinking, we lead with them.
How we're gonna make this happen, so.
Well, if at all possible, if they were available, I personally think we should try to see if, if they could come next week.
All, all I would say is I know it's preliminary for them.
My blocking.
Um, I think the sooner we, the sooner we can get them in, the better, but they might, I mean, we're gonna be meeting every Tuesday now for the next five or six weeks, or whatever it is, I think. So, so if not next week, maybe the week after, I guess, is what I'm, you know, just, you know, have them sort of in the front of our schedule versus the
Yeah, we'll be meeting
Even if it's preliminary.
And then we'll, we won't be meeting till the first.
Yeah, we do skip one
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were kinda going right in the
We skipped the 22nd.
Right, Daryl's not available.
Thank you, okay, lucky.
Very lucky.
So, either way, whether it's the 15th or the first.
I guess I, sooner, you know, at the sooner end, it would be my preference.
Right, and, and I, I certainly think DPW, it's another big budget and
And police and fire, might, would be my
Police and fire, yeah, I'm, you know, there's, right, and, and especially with fire, there's some, you know, that's gonna be a challenge, and we all, we all know it, and the sooner we can give Chief Flaherty some sort of answers of what we think might work, the the better, you know, and it's, it'll be, it'll be interesting, we're, we're thankful that you, I guess you voted on the ARPA funds to, to fund the weekend, um, per diem gifts, right?
Through the end of the fiscal year.
Through the end of the year, so, you know, that, that'll hopefully give us, start to give us a good, good idea of what's possible with what his ultimate budget is, so.
Plus also, that should help us determine if it's generating any income to offset the cost of what we're paying for, so, I mean, you need like six months to act, or three or four months to actually see what's happening with revenue there and
There's a lag, you know, with insurance payouts.
Yeah, no, and, and you're right, and that, that's gonna be the challenge, is trying to figure out how many of these calls he can make, I mean, certainly, it's gonna cost the town more money, but
Yeah, I mean, this is a tricky, it's certainly gonna bring in revenue, but it's not, it's not profit-making in any way.
Oh, no, it's probably not, it won't even
It loses money, probably, you know, like if you consider the cost of the ambulance itself, certainly, uh, doesn't cover all that. So I mean, this is really an issue over the long haul about
It gets back to our initial discussion about what, what do people want, and what do they expect?
Education, police and fire responses.
Right, do you want us sometime afterwards?
Road cleared, I mean, that's, that's what this is all about.
Yeah, how long do you want to wait for Northampton to come sometimes?
Yeah.
Or Deerfield, or in some cases, Goshen.
Well, right, and if, and, and going forward, according to what the chief said, and I'm sure you guys have heard it, if we decide not to fund some of this, we're gonna have to fund something, whether it's to the city of Northampton or to South County, um, fire, you know what I mean, so, it's gonna cost us one way or another.
It's worth noting that, you know, I've had conversations with the chief and with the chief from Northampton, because when we are not able to respond to calls and it goes out to other departments, those other departments are just as strapped in terms of their staffing and, and availability, and it, and it, you know, it, it creates a, a big issue with our neighboring communities.
Absolutely.
So, it's something we need to think about.
Yeah.
And I believe the paper had Hadley paying like $250,000 to have the backup ambulance, or have the ambulance service, which is a big number, I mean, our ambulance has been, our fire department's been, what, around 90, so if, if we were paying additional 50 or 60,000 for backup, that off, I mean, I guess that's just another argument for another time, but
Well, and, and, and if I heard the number right, and you guys helped me, but I believe what the number that Chief Flaherty used was, he talked to South County EMS, and I believe they said for 250,000, was that about?
Okay, good.
250, 280, which would not guarantee that there is a rig available on a call, it doesn't get an extra
Add to the, what they have, it's just, you're just a new partner.
Just for the service, just to pay for the service.
It doesn't, yeah, and, so, and that, that's a real, real challenge, so.
I guess, you know, getting back to, you know, having the school in early, having fire in early, because those are, look like the two departments that are asking for the most significant increases. It gives us plenty of time to talk with them, and it gives townspeople a good amount of time
Right.
Sort of watch this process and how it works, and, and more time to sort of educate the public about what these requests mean and, and what not funding at that, the levels that are being asked for with those. So, that, that's why I think the sooner that, that we can get those types of departments.
And the only thing I would add is, from a school perspective, is we're just kicking off the negotiations, so that won't be part of, I mean, you know, that's an unknown.
Yeah, and I, and I'm pretty sure, you know, the superintendent said to us that, you know, he's put in a number, but
Is that, and that's in that, that estimate?
It's in that, I mean, you know
Well, that's good, but it's in there.
It's not a guarantee, but he's got something put in, it's kinda like, I'm sure Phil, when he presents a budget, has got something in there for that.
But it's good to know that, because that number, that 400,000, that's a big number.
Yeah.
But it includes everything so far.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Yeah, includes some estimate of what might happen.
What might happen, right. Yeah. So
I guess Marlene, I would just, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was gonna say, so for the 15th, are you guys, on these meetings, which are regular selectman meetings for you?
So the 15th is, right?
Next week is a regular meeting.
So we thought we would
Every other week is a regular meeting for us.
We would do, what we would normally do is post at 5:30, take care of anything that comes up, and then meet with you guys at 6:00.
Will that be okay?
I think so.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, you know, you know, that
Unless you can do earlier.
No, wait.
Do you think we would, I mean, we need time for any business that might come up.
You do need time to, yes, absolutely.
Well, and, and I guess I was wondering, do we need to come later, do, on those nights, do we need to start at 7:00 rather than 6:30?
Well, I think maybe we'll have to judge that based on how the agenda's looking, otherwise, you know, we do have to take care of other things.
Right.
It's good, 6:30, that, that puts the pressure on to get it done real fast.
I know.
Yes, agreed.
Actually, it's true, because these are, you know, long meetings, particularly with budget meetings, you know,
Right.
We, we all have a limit.
Oh, yeah.
I enjoy the process though, of particularly going through the budgets with the department heads. I think it's, and it gets a lot of really great information out to townspeople too, I think, so.
So we will ask the school if they are available next week, or we wanna
Either next week or the first.
Or the first, okay.
Whichever works for them and
But try to get, uh, fire and, and police and DPW in here too, early on, okay.
So did I
Well, we might need a delay with Phil.
Yeah, that our DPW director is
He's out right now.
That is out.
Yeah.
Okay. So
Be a, maybe a remote, you know, we'll have to see how things went, yeah.
Okay.
So, all, all I would say, Marlene, is I, I, and the, my colleagues and the finance committee can, can chime in, so if the schools aren't able to do the first, or, or do we have a pecking order, like, would you, would we like to try to get police and fire on the first?
I have police and fire down, I have police and fire, yeah.
And, um, yeah.
Fire, DPW, and
And then I would, I would think maybe the council on aging
Yeah.
Would, would be in, in that tier.
And, and, you know, yeah, I mean, they're all important, so, but yes.
Yeah. Some from a size perspective take a little bit longer, that's all, I was just trying to back Phil, like, have a, have a large one and another department is maybe not so large, and have them do it that way on a cer, on certain nights.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if the planning board is looking, there was, if they, I haven't looked at their budget and whether they're looking, I know they were looking for some some, some help.
They are still seeking a, a town planner, a part-time town planner, as they have, um, in previous years. And I, I was told, I'm waiting for some additional information, but I was told that, um, a neighboring town is interested in, uh, sharing a town planner with Happyville. I want, I'd like to get the details and, and speak with, with the town administrator there.
That, that would be good, good to know, I mean, and it kinda goes back to the whole volunteer thing, I mean, we, we've been lucky and, and I, we've got a very good planning board, don't get me wrong, but, you know, it takes a red, a level of expertise to, um, with all these zoning bylaws and stuff, and so giving them the help they need, maybe.
Especially if we're, you know, if we're really gonna try to attract business and, you know.
They, they seem to be becoming busier, I mean, they're meeting regularly on a monthly basis and pretty, you know, for agenda times. There's been some, uh, just preliminary conversations with people visiting the planning board, and then there's been, you know, actual, um, applications.
It's a big job, planning board is a big job.
Big job.
Okay.
What's this on the annual town meeting venue, or are we
Yeah, do we wanna think about holding town meeting at Smith Academy this year?
Yeah.
Yes.
At this point, I mean, three months away still.
We've been pretty well attended at the pavilion, I have to say.
I was just gonna say, I think people really like it at the pavilion.
I know, we've been very fortunate, the weather has worked out.
The weather has been really great, and so
The first one was the best town meeting we've had.
In, in the history of town meetings, yeah, it was really nice.
The weather, yeah.
So, you know, it's all, it's a gamble.
It is.
And you can't change the venue, is that right?
Well, we publish the town meeting warrant, yeah.
The venue, so like if you were
We have to get with town moderator and see what he wants.
Thunderstorms or something, you know, we just wouldn't want to be there, so, but I, 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 I heard, had so many people say, they really liked it down there, and we did what? Three there, right?
We had two, annual town meetings, a special.
Two and a half.
We did a special, yeah.
Yeah.
The special was cold, but it was, you know, it was, it was, it was a quick meeting, but it was, it was cold. Well, I mean, I think it, you know, I don't think that there's, there's plenty of space at Smith Academy in terms of, you know, maybe people feeling comfortable and, you know, that sort of thing, I mean, that's where we've always done them, there's always been plenty of space, but people really did like, like it down.
See what the town moderator wants to do.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea to speak to Joe.
Yeah, I did ask, I had a conversation with the town clerk, and she had said Smith Academy too, she was
It's, is it easier for her down at Smith Academy?
Um, I don't know, no, she didn't get into, you know, whether it's easier, but she, I think she just felt that we're at a place where, yes, we, we should be able to hold it there.
I think it's a little more controlled environment.
I have not had a conversation with our moderator.
For standing up, sitting, from an accounting perspective, is certainly a better
Yes.
Way of doing it.
And even the, you know, the out-of-town people who come, there's, it, it just seems, it, I, I
You can be on the bleachers and
That's for sure is true, and there's no weather issues.
Yeah.
But people really did like those outdoor ones.
No, they, they were, it was a nice change.
Nice change. Yeah, I guess a good starting point would be Joe.
At least we didn't have to do it in some communities, remember, they had to have special meetings and they were outside and they all had their headlights on, because there wasn't really a setup for it, it was winter, and, oh, man.
Yeah, we at least have a pavilion.
Yeah, you're right.
Right.
We know if it's necessary, we make it work.
That's true. What's your thoughts on that, Ed?
Well, I mean, we've been doing things in steps, I mean, when I first got on the board, it was trying to get the finances in, in order, that's been completed. We've also got the same problems we have every year, which is how to offset our tax base and get in good industry. We got five and 10 going, hopefully, we can continue doing that. And the school, which has a budget of 70%, is always the ones that need the most money, so they're, and then we also have the idea of expanding services, so it's, it's all a matter of trying to put it all together. As far as the math thing, I think that's gonna be lifted, so I think Smith Academy's gonna be a doable thing, so those are my thoughts to sum it up quickly for you, okay.
Right in a nutshell.
Look at that, Ed, right to the point, that's perfect.
So, you know, actually, the math thing being gone might actually mean that some people would feel more comfortable at the pavilion. You know, because some people just aren't gonna be comfortable for a long time, I mean, you know, but who knows, it's hard to know, this is all changing so fast, I don't think that there'll be any limitations or restrictions that prohibit us from having it at Smith Academy.
No.
I don't think that will be. So, okay, you'll talk to Joe, or do you want me to talk to Joe?
Oh, yes, I will be glad to, I'll be glad to. Um, one thing I did want to mention, or maybe you wanna wait and, and discuss it at another meeting, Sean and, and Daryl, and the rest of the finance committee members, last week, we had talked about the capital planning bylaw, and Sean, you were going to I think, sort of bring that up.
I mean, I've just, it's come up, the capital planning around certain issues about what needs to be reviewed and so on and so forth. I'm wondering if we want to consider updating the capital planning bylaw. $10,000 is really low, you know, for a dollar amount particularly. Yeah, I mean, you know, so that seems like, that seems like, it seems, the intent, if you read the bylaw, the intent is that the capital planning reviews, um, projects that are gonna have a long-term impact on the town. And to me, things like Chromebooks at the school, uh, personal protective fire equipment for the fire department, self-contained breathing apparatus from the fire department, those are not things that have a long-term impact on the town. Those are just things that you have to have if you want to run a school or a fire department.
There's like a customary lifespan for those types of things.
Right, and right now, the bylaw says anything that lasts over five years. And that's kinda right on the cusp of like, a lot of these things are like literally five-year things. So like the, the personal protective equipment for the fire department is seven years. And it, and the each individual piece of equipment is not $10,000, but because they are like items,
Yep.
They get grouped into a group, so capital planning winds up looking at that with like, I mean, you know, how would you, how would you think about that, uh, capital plan, you know what I mean, like, if you want to run a fire department, you have to have coats of pants and boots, you know what I mean, like, so
Do you think, do you think part of it is, or was, that, so you're saying it would not come before capital plan whatsoever? So, so do you think part of the process or part of the planning or, or what we do now is because if it's on capital plan, we all, we normally try to go to free cash to pay for it? Versus if it's in somebody's operating budget or in their expense item, it's gonna be, where's the money coming from?
Although I will say that the bylaw makes no distinction in that area.
I know, it, it doesn't spell it out, but that's kind of been the thing, so if it's really about, we don't, we don't care, if I'm a department, I don't really care where it goes, I just wanna know how it's gonna get paid for, right?
Right.
So, so
That is going to get paid for.
If we do, right, so if we do something like that, Sean, which I don't have a problem with, by the way, we're just gonna have to figure out a different way of how we choose, we, the finance committee and select board, decide how to pay for things, like, you know what I mean?
Right, I think it's just the, uh, the question of like, it feels like capital planning should be reviewing purchases of major equipment, so, you know, not necessarily every pickup truck, but any major piece of equipment that's significantly expensive. or any kind of infrastructure, buildings in town, you know, renovations that cost significant amounts. Water, sewer projects, any of that stuff. And I think you could comfortably raise it to $25,000, you know, and eliminate a lot of this little stuff.
And that's the division of local services recommended at the time when we updated our policies.
Was what, 25?
The 25,000. But because of the bylaw, the bylaw stated 10,000, that policy changed.
Part of it was probably tied to when do you have to go out to bid versus... I mean, I think it was all probably tied together. The funding source, when do you have to go out to bid, and that's why it all, you know...
And on these things now, we're not even going out to bid.
Right.
I mean, because they're all on a state or some bid list.
And the amounts change, I think.
Or just purchasing it off a bid list somewhere.
Right, right.
Well, I think the other, the other challenge, though, is with, specifically with the two items you used as an example. I mean, it would be so difficult if you're putting that money in, you're building that money into the budgets for those departments that are, have so many dueling priorities, that that, maybe pulling it out of the budget makes it not likely that they, that money would just be absorbed for other things and then those purchases would be put off.
Well, they might be. I mean, I would say, though, that like, I mean, I don't know. It's, because both those items are actually scheduled items, right? So like, they don't all get replaced at once.
Right.
You know, like the fire department buys X number of new sets of outfits every year, right? And I feel like that's not really something you can kind of put off too much, because at some point, they're not certifiable anymore and you have to have new ones. You can't have old ones. And I kind of feel like, you know, I mean, yes, it could come up at the school. I mean, like, I'm sure with textbooks at one point or another, it came up and they didn't buy textbooks one year because they didn't have the money or whatever.
Concern is you're balancing all these priorities and is that one that would be easy to...
Honestly, in my opinion, that's why you have an elected school committee. They balance those priorities and that's what their job is, you know? I don't see those projects as having a long-term impact on the town. You know, like, if you didn't buy Chromebooks this year and you bought twice as many next year, would that have a long-term impact on the town? Not really. I think what we're trying to avoid is like, you know, how do you balance the sewer project versus the water line or the renovations at town hall versus renovations at the library, whatever, you know, whatever the project is? So that you can manage the debt. I mean, the bylaw really gets heavily into, and the stuff we adopted, is that '16, '17? When did we adopt the...
In '17. Actually, it was '18.
'18. The stuff that we adopted in '18 in terms of financial practices, I mean, it gets into a lot of detail around debt and, you know, how to balance it and those kind of things, which is all fine, but it just doesn't seem designed around those things. They're a part of an operating, ongoing expense.
I think this is a good conversation, because even procurement laws have increased their values on bidding. It's all changed. $10,000 back then is probably what, $20,000, $30,000 today? I'm not sure. '18, what was it, 2018 is, when was the bylaw established?
Oh, the bylaw goes back...
Years ago, right?
Yeah, quite a year.
So $10,000 back then was a lot of money. Today, it's not as much.
So you're suggesting, then, that those items would just be, there'd just be money built into the budget for each of those departments?
You'd have to.
I mean, that would be part of the budget process, deciding what to do, but yes, it would, yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't decide to pay for some of it out of free cash, which...
Right.
But, but it should be part of the budget. I mean, Chromebooks are going to be...
Right, if you looked back 25 years ago, whatever, technology replacement at the school, right, was like a different thing than buying Chromebooks, which is like a thing you're going to have to do every so, every year or every set of years. You know, like...
You got your Mod 40 monitor and that was it, man.
Right, right. Yeah. You put your, you know, that was more designed around putting in like, if we were putting new, I mean, hopefully, we never will put in new servers again. Hopefully, we'll, you know, do something different. But, you know, like that was, I feel like it was designed for that, not for, you know...
Is it possible to have like, the departments have like an operating budget like they produce now and then just have something below the line, like their own little capital line? I don't know if that's possible to do.
I think that actually makes sense. So we, so we would know what, like what's this year versus we really need to get this...
That would be like a free cash item as opposed to their regular taxation.
I mean, they could request it for sure. I mean, the way we do the budgets, everything is in an individual line. You know what I mean? Like literally, if you look at the school budget, for example, like, I mean, textbooks is, you know, there's a line for everything. But, so they could request it. I mean, certainly, there's nothing to say you couldn't fund it out of free cash or couldn't be requested out of free cash.
So when, and when the budget comes up at town meeting, it says X number of dollars from taxation and X from free cash?
Right.
That's a good question Diane brings up, because it may be something that the department doesn't necessarily need to have in their budget every year. Although, you know, I'd be concerned that then departments might think that they could lose that money, not get it back, you know, but, you know, they're...
They should lose it if they don't need it.
Right. Well, yes, that's true. That's true.
But what they've done, Marlene, is divide it up. You know what I mean? Like the fire department and the school, what they've done with those two items is they've divided them onto a five-year schedule. So they say, we're going to buy 25 this year, we're going to buy 25 next year, we're going to buy 25 the year after that, and then at the end of five years, we're going to have all brand-new ones.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So that's how they've made it like an operating expense.
As long as there isn't a temptation to say, this is all part of our budget now. Money's tight this year. We're going to defer these Chromebooks. We're going to defer the Chromebook. And then it comes back as a capital item as well after a few years if there were deferrals. That's my concern. Same with on the fire side, you know, the same...
What costs today does it become a capital project, or should it be? How much money before something is called a capital project?
Yeah.
Yeah, $20,000 for Chromebooks, I don't think that's a capital project, in my opinion. Nor do, nor do I think, I can't remember what the chief's looking for, for the clothing, but it's similar numbers. I mean, it goes back to your point, you know, maybe, you know, we ask the town to change the bylaw to $25,000 or $30,000. I mean, certainly...
It's definitely worth thinking about.
Yeah, I mean, capital planning, you guys should...
And, you know, I think it's worth talking to the departments about.
Right.
How they really want to work it, too.
Right.
Those two, those two departments, because they have the two most obvious sort of rolling capital...
Right.
Well, vehicles would be.
In the DPW.
Right, if it wasn't for the lease.
But we're doing the lease, so it, yeah, doesn't really come up.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if it makes sense, but if something's going to be 10 grand, should there be another process for venting it to determine? Or is that already part of their budget when they come in front of the committee and say, we need another 10 grand for this? That becomes part of their, it's not called a capital project anymore. It's called, you know, another additional expense.
I mean, I mean, the same is true for all the technology needs we have in town hall and your budget, you know, and we keep, keep changing and maneuvering through that and...
Right. And do those go, have those ever gone through capital planning?
Some items have. Well, it's been a while. It's been a while. Yeah, the network, I think, no, actually, that was part of our operating...
When we bought like a bunch of desktop there, maybe it was just under $10,000.
It's been a while, but years ago, I mean, yeah, it was quite a bit.
So if you had a department, say the DPW, that needed a larger ticket item that couldn't really be absorbed by the budget, but didn't meet that capital threshold, like, I don't know, $10,000, maybe a welder or something like that, how would they fund that, then? If it doesn't reach that capital level, but it's not, it's too large to just be absorbed and...
It just comes here.
Comes, comes, comes in front of us?
Okay.
Or in front of whoever us is.
Do it out of taxation? Do we want to do it out of free cash, or do we want to say no? It's just not, it's just skipping the step of having capital plan review it.
Right.
That's really all.
Yeah, it's probably worth considering.
Do you have to have a dollar amount, or can you just say five years or more? You know, the useful life of the item has to be more than five years or else...
The only problem with that would be, you might get into reviewing some things that are really low-cost things, but last a long time, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
I think it should be both, time and money.
Yeah, because if they buy a piece of water pipe down at the DPW that's going to last 40 years and cost 800 bucks, you know what I mean? Like, do you want to review that? Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. All good conversations.
That sounds like Ed wrapping things up.
And I'm with that. So, I was going to say, some Olympic scheme is waiting for my...
Oh, you get into watching that, Daryl?
Oh, you betcha.
Yeah, yeah. I enjoy some of it, too.
It's fun.
Well, good, great first start, good discussions. I can't wait to have departments in.
So we'll see. We'll be here next week and you'll just email us who's going to be in, so we'll know who to be prepared for.
Make sure we review their...
I will do that, yeah.
Yes.
Believe it or not, I haven't looked at these all perfectly.
That might be helpful, huh?
Well, I just got, I just got these.
To adjourn the selectman meeting?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Are you guys adjourning?
We, yes. Are we adjourning?
Yes. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John, Karen, Sharon, Marlene.
Thank you. Good chat.